Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call this Orangeburg County Council meeting of March the 4th, 2019 to order. We're going to ask Councilman Tremble to give us a moment of thanks before we proceed.
You will bow, I think, correct. Father, we thank you for being here today and for this hour, Lord, when we come together to discuss the business of the county. Father, we pray that the things that we say and do might be for the better of the citizens of our county and that we might improve the quality of life here in Orangeburg County. Father, we just ask for your guidance and direction, and all that we say may be pleasing in your sight. In his name we pray.
Amen. Thank you. I hope everyone had had opportunity to look at the two, I mean, look at the minutes of the February 19th meeting, and if you know there are any changes needed, please note so. If not, I would appreciate a motion in second for those approval of those minutes. Subway, moved by Mr. Laura Frazier, and seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith, that those minutes be approved as written. All in favor, please notify by saying aye. And opposed, the ayes have it, a motion in care. Again, for those who are here today, if you haven't visited our meeting before, at the beginning of our meeting, we have two areas of public comments, one's of agenda items and one of public comments of other matters. If the agenda item contains a public hearing, you will wait until that point before you comment on that item. If not, the floor is now open for any agenda items coming. Hearing now, we will close that portion and open the floor for public comments of other matters. Anything that anyone has that they would like to bring toward the full county council, we will entertain that at this time. Hearing now, we will close that portion of the meeting, and we'll go into our regular agenda. We have, first thing on the agenda is a presentation from Palmetto Pride, and I will entertain that problem as you introduce who you are and what you got.
My name is Mallory Coffey. I am the Keep South Carolina Beautiful Director and the Community Outreach Program Manager at Palmetto Pride. I am originally from Banbury County, so I grew up coming to Orangeburg for all the fun stuff that we wanted to do, and so this is home to me, so it's great to be back here in the vicious for an hour or so. So really quickly, I'm here to explain what Palmetto Pride does. I know that you guys may be familiar with us, but to give you some history of who we are, what we do, and why, and then I have two awards that I want to talk about, the two citizens from Orangeburg County received, and then talk to you about a project that we have planned. So, our impact. We've been finding litter in South Carolina for more than 20 years now. This marks our 20-year anniversary. We started as a, not as a nonprofit, but as a government's task force, and then slowly but surely, we became the nonprofit we are today. And since we began, we picked up over 62 million pounds of litter from roads and other natural areas like rivers and streams, and we have saved. We have a cost avoidance to local governments that's new all of more than $24 million. And we've been able to give almost $7 million back to cities, counties, and state groups through our grant funds that we have each year. We've reached over millions, students with our education programs, and each year, we reach more than 100,000 students. This number is incorrect because we just had three trainings for our Keep South Carolina Beautiful affiliates, and very soon this number will be 35. You have a local affiliate here, Keep Orangeburg County Beautiful, and they're doing great things. So as I said before, we started in 1999 as the government's task force on litter. That's also when our puppet show was created. I know Orangeburg has seen it a few times. Ms. Dian Currie makes sure that it's always on a school calendar. And then in 2001 is when we actually became a nonprofit. It's also when Keep South Carolina Beautiful came under the umbrella of Palmetto Pride. A year later is when our Litter Busters hotline launched. You may have called it before. It's the 1-877-litter number that you call, and it's also when Palmetto Pride Ways was created to support cleanup on litters. Okay, and then 2003, we held our first litter blitz in Anderson County. We created a curriculum with Keep South Carolina Beautiful, and it's also when we held our first breaks as we were in National Forests Cleanup. 2009, that's when our litter free gangs was created. That's where students take over what the custodians normally do in a football game, and they receive money for it. Each high school can do this once a year. Sometimes we're able to do it at baseball games, but it just gives different clubs opportunities to help out. Then in 2012, that's when the adoptive highway, the national pickup program, came under Palmetto Pride. Orangeburg is a little bit different because their adoptive highway program, they have such a large area, they have two coordinators. And recently, that has changed, so we're really excited about those opportunities coming as available. Last year, we launched our hotline via our mobile app. So if you have a smartphone, you can download our app and report litter bugs that way. And we also released our new curriculum and updated the litter laws in South Carolina, one of our biggest achievements. So of course, we fight to eradicate litter. That's what we're here to talk to you about today, and we do that through education, enforcement, awareness, and pickup. So through education, we have many, many different programs. We've already talked about the puppet show. We have the litter treasures everyone art contest, and we are about to announce those winners, which is really exciting. We have our own curriculum where teachers, the standards are already written into the curriculum, so all the teacher has to do is pick it up and take it and put it in their classroom. We have our own education coordinator that will actually come into your schools and teach for you. Through enforcement, you have one of the best enforcement officers in the state of South Carolina sitting in the room with you right now, Marie Canty, right there. She is a jewel. You guys should definitely be proud to have her. We work closely with Maureen and many others across the state on illegal dumping cases. We give grants so individuals can have cameras and other equipment to help fight litter and prosecute. And then through awareness, that's the biggest part of what we do. Economic development, man, if you've got a litter community, your economic development is going to be down big time. So we love to come into communities and help and teach others how to create a cleaner, greener, more beautiful area. And finally, pickup. And that's where I'm going to end this presentation and move into the next part, is that's why we're here today. So Marie Canty, in April, we have a really big event planned, and Councilman Cooper Smith has been so diligent in helping us get this planned, so we're asking businesses and individuals just to come out and take pride and love where they live. What we're asking, Marie has already sent out letters to businesses from what I understand, and we're going to be partnering with her to follow up with these businesses to say, hey, why don't you take advantage of this opportunity and get some real great press about keeping your area, whether it's just for your business, whether it's down the road, or whether you just want to adopt a whole area of Orangeburg County, that would be great, wouldn't it, Marie? To just go out there and clean up and take pride and love where you live. All you have to do is call or register to receive the bags, and we have flyers right here that Marie put together, and we are also going to create a Facebook event for them at Palmetto Pride, just so they can really get the information out there. Now, the event is, the supplies will be donated from Keep South Carolina Beautiful and Palmetto Pride, so that won't be a cost to you. And just being from this area and knowing a lot of people here, I'll be in and out of different businesses, making sure that they know what a great opportunity this is. So Marie's still going to be able to do her job while I'm out, just helping her do what she does best. So this isn't the first time that litter has been brought up to you all. You know that. We recently had a meeting here. Thank you so much for having us here, Ms. Cooper Smith. But at Palmetto Pride, we realized that for the counties and the locals, we wouldn't be successful. So this year, we launched a new award program that we hope can continue to be presented at the South Carolina Association of Counties, because it's important to recognize your efforts. It's called the Leaders Against Litter Awards, and it honors elected officials who sought to make a change in their communities by working with their administrators, employees, and citizens on litter prevention. These leaders against litter led the charge to make important changes in how their counties address litter, specifically following what we believe are the basic tenets for change: education, enforcement, awareness, and pickup, what you all just heard about. We will also award a companion award to an employee whose position and expertise provided for a cohesive implementation of plans. This year, we had the privilege of working with these recipients throughout the year, and one of the greatest rewards of working at Palmetto Pride is getting to know so many wonderful people who become friends to us. And just like in Orangeburg County, you're not just friends, we consider you family. So the elected official that we would like to recognize from Palmetto Pride for this award is Ms. Jada Cooper Smith. And she received her award already, but we just wanted to say that she's been a tireless champion for litter control in Orangeburg County. With the support of the rest of the council and the staff of litter control department, she has been at the forefront of the county's long battle in the war on litter. Ms. Cooper Smith created a litter committee comprised of staff members and community members that needs monthly to work on the problem, and she is always quick to call attention to the issue and equally is quick to recognize the efforts of those that work to solve the problem. And she is part of the solution. She just doesn't call and let us know that there's an issue. She works to find those solutions. Another idea that was hacked from hers, Clean Where You Live, it was from a committee meeting and brought to the fruition, was the update of the litter control ordinance sponsored by Ms. Cooper Smith in December of 2017, and it clarified the ordinance that made it easier for officials to prosecute cases against litter bugs. She's also working with magistrate and accounting on the signing litter pickup for community service, and we have communicated throughout the past few years on litter laws, county wide cleanups, and just general sharing of ideas. So thank you to Ms. Cooper. And finally, we would also like to recognize Marie Canty with co-enforcement. I think I want to break that. We firmly believe that increased ticketing and enforcement of our state and local litter laws are necessary to changing the behavior that creates litter. Marie Canty is so amazing in her job, and that doesn't even describe what she does or who she is. She leads a great team on both enforcement and litter pickup needs, and it's not a small task. The county is huge, and that's just, that doesn't describe what is it, how many people you have, how many roads. And as a result of the new litter ordinance, it says ticket can increase. In 2017, 333 warnings were given and 36 citations. Followed in 2018, 190 warnings were given, but 234 citations were granted, one of the highest in the state of South Carolina. So we were able to give Marie her award today, and Sarah Lyles, our director, was so honored to give Ms. Cooper Smith hers, but if we could just get a photo and just say thank you, ladies, for what you do for Orangeburg County and for South Carolina.
And may I say this, um? Marie and Diane Currie have written and received grants from Palmetto Pride for the county of Orangeburg. You may not know about it. As administrator, you know about it, I'm sure, but they have received several grants from Palmetto Pride. And Palmetto Pride sponsors a lot of the material, the bags, the grabbers during our cleanup weeks. Thank you so much.
I do have one more announcement, with, with Hallam Marie. So yes, you do get grants from Palmetto Pride. You get the litter prevention grant, which is up to $15,000. The affiliate gets the Keep South Carolina Beautiful annual support grant, and most recent one last week was announced that you were a recipient of the Edisto River Adopt a Landing Grant.
You told me not to say it, and I didn't say it.
We did, um, we did the announcement at Walther Farms. They were so, yeah, Walther Farms is a great group of farmers. They've reached out to us. They do adoptive highways. They've picked up with us, and they really believe in this mission and what y'all are doing. And I do want to say this, when they read your grant application, that was the one they were most excited about. So you guys are doing great things, and we are just greatly appreciative of who you are and what you do and what you stand for. So congratulations to all of you.
Cooper Smith, it's, I hope that we can really publicize what's going on a lot more. Certainly, I'd like to adopt the road plan, try to get out of even to the flyers out to churches and businesses and little barber shop, beauty shop, everywhere. We need to really push that to try to get all women, to try to get people really in tune with that. And if we can do that, well, we certainly appreciate what you do, your time you spend pushing this, especially Marie, I know you do. You know, we, Mr. Ravelnail, we represent a large rural area, we got a lot of issues there. We appreciate all you do. You know, it's a challenging job, and a thankless job too. So thank you so very much. I know it's out of order, Mr. Chairman, but I just wanted to say that our radio station makes an announcement about litter and every event regarding litter at least 15 times every single day, every day. We talk to Ms. Canty, of course, we talk to Ms. Dian, every day, we talk about litter, picking up litter, and the event that's going to take place in April.
Well, that's, that's, I appreciate it, Mr. Harvey, your radio station doing that. Of course, I appreciate all you do to publicize and, you know, recognize the challenges and also the good things that we're doing in Orangeburg County. And I guess, again, it's a networking, and just like the summit we're having now, we talked about, we are here to try to improve on each other. And so that's the same thing we are trying to do within our counties. We try to get all the organization and other people together, so we all need to echo that. It's like going to a meeting, and if you ain't going to take nothing back, I didn't count that. So all of us need to go, when we go to our churches and our barber shops, beauty shops, talk about that. Of course, if you got the flyers, we need to get them out, and I'll be willing to take some out myself to go try them. Any other comments, Ms.?
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned industry. It would be nice if we could get the industries and the churches during the week of our cleanup to just use their digital marquees to say, don't litter, keep Orangeburg County beautiful, love where you live, work. If we could get the businesses and churches to use their digital marquee to support our litter effort, that would be great.
What I'd like to say is that, I don't know whether or not you paid much attention, or we're the new folk on the block. The concerned citizens of Edisto Drive did a grant for $15,000. You all wrote us back to let us know that we did not get the money, but at least you all are going to give us the jackets, the picker-uppers, and the bags, and we thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. I do want to add to that. So we only had $250,000 set aside for this grant, and we had over $650,000 worth of requests. Well, we appreciate your efforts, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All of you. Revolution in Orders, this Island is a revolution honoring National Women's History Month of the year, too.
Yes, sir. State of South Carolina, County of Orangeburg, resolution, sponsor, Jada Cooper Smith, honoring National Women's History Month. Whereas before the 1960s and 70s, women had no rights. Women's history was at one time neglected in all areas: healthcare, sports, business, education, government, public service, law, the arts, the military, and all other ages. And whereas in 1978, the Sonoma California School District sponsored a Women's History Week to promote the teaching of women's history in their schools. And whereas National Women's History Month began as a single week and as a single, as a local event, and whereas passed a resolution making the week a national celebration in 1981. And whereas a group of women campaigned with representatives from schools, libraries, museums, to expand the celebration to a full month, and Congress approved in 1987. And whereas the Month of March is to pay tribute to women of every ethnic background, race, and class in America, whose commitment to nature and the planet have proved invaluable. And whereas since 1995, Presidents Clinton, Bush, Obama, and Trump have issued a series of annual proclamations designated the Month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas the 2019 theme for Women's National History Month is visionary women, champions of peace and nonviolence. And whereas we now have women excelling in practically every area as men. Women are astronauts, Supreme Court justices, governors, college presidents, in aviation, CEOs of multimillion-dollar companies, entrepreneurs, and so forth. Now therefore, be resolved that this fourth day of March 2019, that the Orangeburg County Council recognizes and applauds the achievement made by women of the past, the present, and their pioneering the future. Be further resolved this fourth day of March 2019 that a copy of this relationship is spread across the permanent written records of Orangeburg County. Orangeburg County Council, Johnny Wright Chair, Jada Cooper Smith, and Asha Conne N. 14.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Move to accept resolution.
Second. Moved by Mr. Ravelnail, seconded by Ms. Frazier, that we accept the resolution as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it, motion in care. Item two, the Order's third reading, and this is an order stating the exception for water sewer service charges, water sewer tap fees, deposits, and all other fees and surcharges for commercial and industrial customers of the county of Orangeburg, South Carolina. Mr. Administrator, for those who may not have, for some reason been here, just to give a quick...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And according to our utilities that we run, with water and wastewater, the foundation of those departments we build with USDA grants and other type fundings that require us to keep our rates at a solvent level, this is just an update of the rates to reflect any changes that we receive from master meter agreements with DPU and any other providers that provide service to us, as well as our charges that we must incur on behalf of McMaran Water.
Summary of that. Any questions? If not, could I get a motion in second for third and final reading on that?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Ravelnail, and seconded by Mr. Owens. Third reading, all in favor, signify as aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it, motion in care. Item three is an order's second reading and a public hearing, and this is an order amending Chapter 34 of Orangeburg County Code of Orders regarding southern waste, including violation penalties and other related matters. Administrator, a quick summary on that. I think most of us know what it's talking about, but for someone that might not have been here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a update of Section 34, and basically it deals with fines and collection fees and penalties of that section. Basically, looking at the addition of uncovered load fee and as well as a mixed load fee that will be attached to any individual who brings a mixed load into the house garbage side of the landfill. And also changing the amount of the fees in that part to be able to punish people who bring in mixed loads, it goes from $100 to $500.
Okay, the floor is open for public hearing. Does anyone have any other comments on that?
For clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We stated that mixed load would be from $100 to $500?
Yes, sir.
I thought that we stated, and the plan stated that mixed load would be a $500 fine. How did we get down to $100?
No, it's going up to five from $100.
A regular load is how much?
Regular mixed load fine was $100, and now we've upped it to $500.
You got that, Mr. Owens? It means it was, when he says it going from $100 to $500, it's not a graduation. It's just saying that it was $100, now it's $500.
I hope it's not a graduation, thank you.
Got it? Thank you, sir, for the notation. Could I get a motion in second for a second reading?
Subway, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Ravelnail, seconded by Ms. Smith. Second reading on that order, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's care. We have a recommendation from the Tax and Tourism Committee. You to, I guess, Mr. Administrator, go through that, or you can take them all, just go through the whole thing, and then we'll...
I'll summarize them all, and then we can vote afterwards.
Okay.
The Tax and Tourism Advisory Committee met on February 26, 2019. They had a funding recommendation. This app was presented to them, and they have agreed to the following to present to you for approval. Express grassroots sports for the annual basketball AAU tournament in the amount of $14,846. The Railroad Days Festival for advertising to be used to draw people to the Railroad Festival for $5,279. We have the advertising in the Holly Hill and Waltsboro, Santee area through the newspaper as well as that. Third one is the town of Norway requested funds for their Memorial Day program to help with advertising in the amount of $2,500. The Grand American Coon Hunt, which is requesting funds to help pay for rent and utility building and advertising for the 2020 Coon Hunt in the amount of $10,400. New Perspective Media requesting funds to help with marketing, Orangeburg and marketing with the TV and radio, requesting amount of $10,000. And the Tri-County Regional Chamber of Commerce requested funds to help with tourism promotion in the Chambers area at the Santee Water Park for rat card placements and other advertisements throughout the tri-county region in the amount of $2,000. Total funds recommended was $53,025. Total funds available was $54,749,81, which is the remaining dollars, $1,0724,81 for this board.
You've heard the summarization of the tax and tourism and the recommendation by the Administrator. If there's no question, could I get a motion in second that we approve those recommendations by that committee? Moved by Mr. David Livingston, and seconded by Mr. Ravelnail, that we approve those fundings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's care. Appointment to the Orangeburg County Animal Control, appointment of a court enforcement officer, and Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Orangeburg County Administration would like to hereby present to you Ms. Erin Ellis. Ms. Ellis, would you stand? And she is being presented to you as a co-enforcement officer under this appointment. She'll be able to exercise all authority and access the co-enforcement officers as we have, and she'll be working in the animal control division. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Erica, you're not off Ellis Avenue, say it opposite. I'm just messing with you.
No, sir. I get that a lot, but no, sir.
Thank you so very much for accepting that. I hope everything works well with that. Working with Ms. Canty, I hope all of you will continue to try to keep between litter and animal control and all that, trying to keep everything straight in the county. We appreciate it. Can I get a motion in second to accept her as the new forty?
So, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Owens, seconded by Mr. Ravelnail, that we accept her.
Ms. Lois.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lois. Moved by Ms. Frazier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's care. Thank you so much.
And about a beef that the person in animal control had with him, I thought it was a personal rather than, rather than going by the courts that address animal control. I am not addressing, I think I refer them off as, with the company.
Yes, sir, Mr. Councilman Owens identified the individual and the need to find him that he was seeking. It was in, it was in response to a case that was being worked, and we worked with the individual through the county attorney and myself, and the situation for that particular case was no cross.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Owens, for bringing that forward. You know, as I said, everything we do has a procedure, and we're all humans, and when mistakes are made, we can reckon that's about all we can do. That's all we can do.
What's very unique, sir, that we have tornado warnings and thunderstorm warnings that last for an extended period of time due to the width of the county and the size of the county. It may go on for an hour, sometimes an hour and a half before the system totally gets away from us, so.
Yes, sir, Administrator.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. A couple things. I'd like to echo the fact about Ms. Canty and the amount of effort that she puts in. A lot of these agencies, Palmetto Pride and other state agencies, a lot of that have been taking our lead on a lot of these projects and cooperating throughout the state. So a lot of those ideas that they have been using in other counties and other places originate here in Orangeburg County with our team and Ms. Canty and the other entities that we have. We're glad to say that we are in the process now, as soon as we get the striping on the new litter machine that has come in. new litter machine that has come in, got it up and running, and was running it through a series of tests. We should have it tracked out and ready for a view by council and press in the next couple of weeks. So within the next week and a half, we should be ready to do a demo that is going to include the press and DOT and several other agencies. And last but not least, it's going to be posted on the county's Facebook page, but we'd like to give thanks to Zeus Industries. They did a cleanup as a company, and they cleaned up the road that goes to the...
Red Bank.
Red Bank out there off of 601, and their employees did a hell of a job of cleaning that area up, which was a bad area.
Thirty-five volunteers, eighty-five bags of trash wrapped them up.
Yes, they cleaned Red Bank Road and just...
I received a letter, thanks for that. I need to send that letter to the first who sent it.
Mr. Ravelnail?
I'd just like to say, I heard a report somewhere out there, District One and District Two was the worst littered area in the county. When we get that new machine online, I'd like to try it out in District One.
Is that what they got a vacuum? Is it something full?
It's got a tip, it's almost like a hay bale. It's got tines that circle to kick it in, and then it's got tines on the bottom to jack it up into the conveyor belt. And then once the box gets full, it actually retracts and goes up and lifts up and dumps the box into a flatbed truck, and you keep going. So they did three passes on a landfill road within an hour and a half, and if you had told us to send employees out there and do landfill road, definitely wouldn't be an hour and a half.
It'd be interesting. I think a lot of people would want to see.
Mr. Chairman?
Hopefully be publicized real quick.
DOT is interesting.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Remley.
Yeah, I know what I'm saying, so. And I know that when you look at District One and District Two, we have a more rural area, and we have a lot more dirt road, a lot of hidden pockets that people can dump litter in. It's not that we're just a worse litter district, is the reason for it. I commend Ms. Cooper Smith for what she does, and we're just going to concentrate harder on trying to get some of our litter in our areas picked up as well.
You guys have anything, sir?
Yes, sir.
Janet Cooper Smith?
I challenge District One and District Two councilmembers to pick up most trash that I do in District Seven, then I know that shit is not your fault.
Well, Mr. Owens, how you know me? You already, you already, you already...
I'm just challenging you, that's all.
I heard you. Yes, sir, I appreciate that. We'll do that.
Mr. Chairman, it was worse the year before. It's better now.
Yeah, I hear you.
District One and Two are better now. Maverick, and it's been called.
They are better than they were the year before. But what we did when we rode with Keep Orangeburg Beautiful to do the survey, a lot of times years in the past when they did the roads, they stayed down nothing but state roads. So we, I personally did not feel that it was accurate of what was actually going on because like Councilman Ravelnail and Councilman Johnny Wright said, in their area, a lot of the trash is down the dirt roads because that is mostly what's down there. So when we did the last two years of the survey, we switched it up, not only doing state roads, we do state roads and county roads now, which lead us down a lot of the dirt roads in different parts of the counties as well.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse us a second for failure.
Then we'll come with, Leo, Doc Mall, you have anything you want to offer? Thank you, kind of the conference meeting.
Okay.
Thank you all again for coming, and can I get a motion in second for adjournment?
Submove.
Second.
Move by Ms. Frazier, second by Mr. Owens, that be adjourned. Thank you all for the inputs and the coming to our meeting.